Yes.
Mayor Booblaugh.
Yes. Passes five zero. I was like, what happened over there? Oh, too many are on. All right. And now we have the public hearing that was continued from nine twenty-six, the regular council meeting. So.
All right. The public hearing item before you tonight is an attempt to renew the downtown Turlock Property and Business Improvement District, approving the assessment formula, declaring the results of the ballots, and ordering the levying of the assessments. The downtown Turlock Property Business Improvement District is a benefit assessment district with the primary goal of providing improvements, maintenance, and activities which provide a special benefit to assessed parcels. This approach has been used successfully in other cities throughout the country to provide special benefits to property owners, namely increased sales, attraction of new tenants, increased occupancies, and specifically increased property values. The downtown Turlock Property and Business Improvement District property owners decided to pursue renewal of the downtown Turlock Property Business Improvement District in order to continue a revenue source devoted to providing special benefits to assessed parcels. This approach has been used successfully in other cities throughout the country to provide special benefits to property owners, namely increased sales, attraction of new tenants, increased occupancies, and specifically increased property values. The downtown Turlock Property and Business Improvement District property owners decided to pursue renewal of the downtown Turlock Property Business Improvement District in order to continue a revenue source devoted to providing special benefits to assess property owners. If renewed, the DTPBID would generate approximately $213,957 in assessment revenue annually. Staff is available to answer questions, and also with us tonight from Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association is the executive director, Mr. Travis Regallo.
So just a point of clarification, Mr. Petralakis. This isn't regarding if we're gonna pass it. This is about opening up the ballots, correct? So our discussion on this one is less about what they're gonna do with the money and more about whether or not people voted for it?
Yeah, it's whether the property owners have assessed themselves.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so for a public comment's sake, I'm just trying to understand where we're at, because there's two items. Eight A will be more dialogue.
Well, the eight A is about the agreement between the city and the organization. So I would say any comments about the assessment is fair game.
Okay.
And whatever's in the staff report for the seven C item.
Excellent. All right. Question?
Can I just make one more clarifying question? So it's not only opening up the ballots for the assessment, but we as the legislative body with that the assessment is within are voting to accept that and say that we will support that. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Help me out, because my understanding was we're accepting whatever the vote was, not necessarily that we support it, Mr. Petralakis.
Can I help with that?
Hang on one second.
Help away.
Are you differing yours to him?
No, I'm looking for the resolution draft, which will tell you what the...
Ms. Jackson?
Which just isn't in my...
It's in the matter of...
Yeah, I don't have it in my binder.
We're having a professional meeting. If you want to have a conversation outside, please. Thank you.
Yeah, so the resolution, you renew the downtown district. You approve the assessment form while you declare the results of the majority protest proceedings and order the levy of the assessment. Now, that's kind of written, it's assuming that the assessment passes, right?
Correct.
That the vote passes. So if it doesn't pass, we'll have to think about what the resolution might say, something else.
You will be... This is what we talked about the last time I was here, that you guys would have another opportunity to approve the P bid. We were focusing mainly on opening up the ballots and the votes to allow the property owners to vote. Now, we will count them, and you guys will vote to accept the count. So if the property owners vote yes, we decide we want to take it to council, and we want this assessment to go through, the council still has to accept it in order for us to enact it. It's kind of what takes us from being any old nonprofit and taking membership dues to being an actual district. So you guys would basically accept it to become a district. So you guys will take a vote after this process to approve it. Hopefully that helps you, George.
Not really.
I'm still like, okay, so we accept the ballots. We're not accepting it as whether or not we're in agreement in the second part.
Yeah, so remember, there's two parts of this, which is the P bid part of it, which accepts us to form the district.
Sure.
And then there was a second part of it where we came to the table and we were trying to negotiate how the district interacts with the city, and that would be the eight, the eight A. So this is just on the district forming itself and becoming a district and the financial plans of the district assessment dollars. None of the, how the city interacts with any city funds or anything like that.
Okay. Do you have questions? Okay, let's... Did you actually understand?
No, I was just coming up to, in case there's any questions on what the district, because we did a presentation. Some people might have forgot the assessment part.
It's been a while, yeah. So it's open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding the ballots and what we're gonna... We're gonna take a break and have them count in a moment, but I have to wait for you to decide. Okay, we will close the public hearing, and I will call a ten-minute recess or less for the clerk to count the ballots. Dennis or not, but... We'll wait. Okay. Now the recess has been done, let's have our clerk report on the results of the election, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report that forty-three ballots were received for this item. Fifty-nine point eighty-five percent votes were cast in favor of renewing the district, and forty point fifteen percent votes were cast in opposition of the district. No majority protest exists, and the council may renew the district.
Okay. Do you have anything else to say? Do you have anything? All right. Travis, you want to speak?
I just want to speak on the process. You know, it's been a long process, a little bit longer than we actually want it to be, but I do think that we have come together with the city staff. And I just want to remind people that this is assessment dollars, which is above and beyond tax dollars. These are property owners that are seeing the value and investing in their local community. And so it's very, you know, our board has worked very hard, property owners have worked very hard, city staff has worked pretty hard on this. And I'm excited to move forward in the next ten years, hearing that the property owners voted to approve it. Hopefully you guys are willing to accept what is laid out here. I do think that there's a lot of potential progress here. And one of our main goals was, you know, we look back at the last twenty-five years of this and said, okay, where was the ship selling, and where did it get off the course? And how can we prevent that for the next ten years so that when we're looking back at it, we see all of the successes and how greatly this can benefit our community? So I'm very excited to be a part of this process and want to thank everyone that was involved.
Anyone else? Okay, well, close the public comment. Are there comments? I have some. So it's my understanding, we've closed the public comments, so it's kind of...
Oh.
I don't know. Yeah, I have comments. I'm just confused a little bit here. This is the public funds, right? Whether we want to say our assessment is or isn't taxpayers' money, it is. So when I look at the norm of a five percent, that is not normal. So if we, if it only goes up two percent and we gave five percent, that's a gift of public funds, and that's inappropriate, right? So for me, I think, okay, maybe I could agree to a two-point-five for the city on our properties, because we're also looking at the fact that we may try and provide you other monies to do things that you're saying you're using for your assessment anyway. So that's where I'm struggling right now, because I believe that five percent was too much, and it's not a normal number. It's gonna sway forward and backwards. The economy is a mess. So how do we tell the public we're giving more money than that? And then potentially, if it were to pass, give you even more money? That makes it a little bit hard for me to digest. Yes?
Sure. I guess I have a question in regard to that comment. The five percent annual increase in the assessment, that's something that is voted on by the board of directors?
Yeah, let's do it. I don't know how it's fixed this.
Yes, yes.
And can I just add a little bit onto my question? In the last ten years, how many times has it been raised five percent per year?
So in the last P bid, it was raised five times, and it was two and a half percent. That is our normal rate that we go up to. It was requested from city to put in the verbiage up to five percent. It is not, that does not mean that it would go up five percent every year. It is up to five percent. So the TDPOA board does vote on it, and it, of course, merit with all the property owners in mind, being that the city of Turlock would be a property owner, a substantial property owning holder in our district. You guys would have a voice, and you guys do normally regularly attend our meetings, and they are open to the public if anyone ever wanted to attend, to give input on those. So obviously, we want to make sure that we're, that with the assessment funds that we're doing, that we're doing progressive things. We're doing the most beneficial things for our community. And if property owners feel that we're not doing beneficial, then we want that stated at our meetings so that we can make sure it's positive. Hopefully, that addresses the five percent part of it, that it's up to five percent. So theoretically, it could be a half a percent. It could be two and a half percent. That is something that could be discussed. And then it is voted on by property owners on an annual basis when we set our next year's budget every year. So that is something that can be varied. Was there, am I missing a part of that question?
Okay, I'm confused. Now, you've convoluted the whole thing by saying that board votes for the five percent, but now you're saying the property owners vote for the five percent. And it's not really clear in the P bid, so who votes for the five percent?
The TDPOA board, which is consistent of property owners. That's what... So the TDPOA stands for Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association.
I understand what it means, but you're saying that the board of directors...
The board.
Not the entirety of the property owners.
It does not go out for a vote again, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we don't have a vote on that.
Yeah, the...
Board of directors.
The board of directors would, you guys have, you guys own property, so theoretically, you could assign someone to be on our board if you wanted to.
And again, we're talking about just increases that all property owners, not just what the city's giving.
Yes, we cannot break it. We can't be partial. It would be, as a whole, if it goes for one, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, all across the board, so. The, yeah, so it would include everyone, yeah.
I guess that's where my hangup is, because I'm guessing I'm probably the variable here. And whereas a taxpayer who has a business or owns a property can increase their own tax, they can do that. We can't gift the monies away, especially when we probably, our vote wouldn't matter out of a percentage, right? I'm just trying to be the advocate for the people right now. So then, you're gonna ask us for money, which we expect, right, for other things, and even in the next item. So that assessment, we're actually gonna, we're gonna tax ourselves twice in some ways, right?
So, well, let me just clarify just a little bit. The increase is more of like a cost of living or indexed. It is so that we can maintain, because we're going off of a centage per, a cent price per square foot. It's not like a sales tax rate where it's a percentage. If the economy does thirty million dollars, you get the same percentage, and if it does two million dollars, you get the same percentage. We don't have a way to justify or to measure that, so we go off a square footage. And then if the value of the dollar drops, we're able to adjust to meet what we promised to do in our P bid, the maintenance budget. So it's about taking care of the infrastructure that is promised in the P bid. And that's all we want to take care of there with these assessments. So that allows us to stay within par. We're not gonna do a five percent increase if, you know, if for whatever reason the dollar gets, you know, goes the opposite way or vice versa, so.
I have a question on the assessment itself. So the county collects it, does the county charge the city of Turlock for the collection of the fee, of the assessments?
Not to my knowledge.
There's a small amendment. So do we pass that on to the...
I would like to make a comment just over the issue of the city's assessment on the properties that the city owns. There's four properties, and our current assessment level would be sixteen thousand dollars a year out of an annual budget for this P bid of two hundred and thirteen, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So I think that having this P bid, you know, is a public benefit for the entirety of downtown, for everyone who comes to downtown, and it's, this is City Hall's neighborhood. And so I don't, I think we are missing the forest for the trees here if sixteen thousand dollars, five percent over ten years, is gonna make this all fall apart.
Well, again, if you're, we're looking for a compromise, and I suspect that I'm probably your compromise, perhaps we need to try a different dialogue here. I'm telling you, it's not the sixteen thousand per se. It is the fact that in the next item, we're gonna talk about more money. So it is a combination of all the monies that I'm trying to say, okay, for the elected person for the whole city, how do I look at this and try and be fair? Yes, downtown's important. If we're gonna invest in it, where, how do we invest in it and not overdo? That's where I have my concern. And so we can just go no, no, yes, yes, no, 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 or something. If that's where your compromise is, I'm not sure. I'm just trying to show you where my sticking points are.
Totally fair. I just heard that we can't offer five percent to, you know, five percent to some property owners and a different percentage to someone else, so I don't, I don't understand where we can compromise on this. I would love to hear what we can do.
Well, it's at up to five percent. What if we just say to him, up to two and a half percent? Come on up, Travis.
So it's kind of in a complicated state where the, everything has already been publicized. It would reset the process.
No, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't?
No, I'll read the code section for you. At the conclusion of the public hearing to establish the district, the city council may adopt, revise, change, reduce, or modify the proposed assessment, and also the type of improvements. It's pretty broad language, right? Now, it does say proposed assessments may only be revised by reducing any or all of them. It's kind of, I don't even know what that means, you know, right?
I mean...
But you could, I mean, so let me take a shot at this. I think I, if I understand the concerns, the council under Street and Highway Code three six six two four has that broad authority to modify the assessment. So I think that normally, what, normally what you would see, and I, remember, I come at this from a land use development perspective, because that's what I do mostly, but normally you would have kind of a maximum of five percent like it is or linked to an inflation index, and depending, you know, you could take the higher of those or the lower of those. In this case, you would have to take the lower of them, because you can't, you can't, you can't raise the assessment tonight. You can only lower it. If you tried to go above the five percent, that's when you'd have to go out for a vote. Now, you don't want to, excuse me for a second. You don't want to create a situation where increases have to be put out for, again, a property owner's vote all over again. So you want to build in some flexibility there. I think that kind of compromise with the index, I don't think property owners that are paying this, if inflation really hits and it goes above the five percent, everybody, for a sustained amount of years, everybody's gonna have bigger problems than paying this assessment, right? So I don't think, I don't, so I think it being capped at five percent was probably an important protection for owners of property to vote for it. So that's one, that's one part of it in terms of what you can do on this item. And I understand the mayor's concern about this translating into a gift of public funds. I think in eight A, we just had a feeling, so on the contract part of it, it is, it's in a form approved by the city attorney, right? And so I think based on the concerns, I, you know, we can build language into the agreement probably to address this. I don't know, I can't write it right now on the fly, but I think that in eight A, that would be, you know, we could do that and kind of address the concern of the, you know, the, if, you know, that concern. So let me stop there, and I'll answer any questions.
I just want to clarify on behalf of the property owners, as long as George is willing to say that it's okay, he's the attorney, I promise you, there is no property owner out here that is gonna say, yeah, let me pay less on my assessment, you know, so... Or that, you know, that's gonna fuss about paying less on their assessment. So if you wanted, if the board wants to drop it to two and a half percent, that is acceptable on our end as long as he says that it's acceptable.
Do you want to, like, take five minutes and send out a text to your people?
I, we're governed by the Brown Act, so we can't.
Okay, good point, good point.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so that was my solution. Where are you at now?
I move to approve the P bid with a maximum of two and a half percent increase year over year, if that's clear enough.
I'll second that.
Do you want to have any comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
It was Councilmember Bixel.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
No.
Mayor Booblaugh?
Yes, that passes with the three one. Now we move on to item eight A. It gets a little dicey here. This is the business service agreement, and what do you got there, Director Sims?
All right. The item before you tonight is asking council to authorize the city manager to enter into a downtown Turlock Property and Business Improvement District services agreement in a form of approved by the city attorney between the city of Turlock and the Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association, the TDPOA. The current agreement between the city of Turlock and the Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association expires at the end of 2023. If approved, the renewed downtown Turlock Property Business Improvement District agreement will have a ten-year life. The services agreement would have a three-year initial term with options to renew in year three and six. Approval of the services agreement will commence a chain of events that will lead to significant fiscal impacts to the city, which are described in section five of this report and exhibit A to the proposed services agreement entitled Scope of Services. Staff is available to answer questions, and also, again, we have the director of the TDPOA, Mr. Travis Regallo, with us tonight.
Do you have questions for the director?
Yes, I have a question. So the assessment was just formed and just approved by the council. This agreement has to happen in order for this process to continue, and what happens if it doesn't tonight?
I'm gonna defer to my buddy George. I'm gonna make you actually break glass next time, in case we're... The, well, really, yeah, listen, once you're really at the resolution of intention to renew, the parties are married to each other, okay? And so this gives me the opportunity to answer the question I want to answer, and hopefully I'll answer Councilmember Abrams at the same time. So the way it's set up, once an owners association is identified, that is the body that the council, you know, enters into a contract with. So I wasn't part of the early negotiations. I think it actually was a good idea to do the three-year term with the renewals, but it's kind of an unusual situation where that's the way the contract is, but really, the parties get to, you know, are, you know, I don't even know if I can say married, are, you know, are joined together in this process, you know, for the duration. So I think the three years is a nice time to review the agreements, but that's how that works. And so it is, the current agreement, I believe, it doesn't expire till the end of the year, if I've got that right. So we have, that's why I'm less concerned about this, you know, in terms of getting it done. And so I would, and the last thing, if, and Councilmember Abrams told me if I didn't answer your question, but I do, I did want to point out, really, for the city's concerns, look at exhibit A and especially item three. Item three are our obligations. Now, I did, and I did this late, and I haven't, I think, I think you can't, you know, we have this issue in local government law where we can't enter into a contract that creates debt, right? Each year, you guys have to appropriate funds for the part you're doing, right? So I've softened the language a little bit in the sense that although it's a contract, the intention here is, you know, if the economy goes bust and you don't have the money to do these things, you know, you, each year's council has an independent right to address that, because we can't contractually obligate the city in year one to do things in year three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So that's kind of individual process each year, and so, you know, that's how that part, that's how that part goes.
Other questions? Let's go. Bring it on.
Okay. Did we ever get the letter from the downtown property owners association saying they were in good standing and all of the information we needed?
You know, I'd say there were some, there were some, there were some different communications on that. So at the end of the day, they had actually convinced me along the way that they were an unincorporated association. And I, you know, I was, the city attorney's office, you know, all one of us was satisfied with that. But they chose to incorporate, so they provided us their secretary of state, what the articles they filed with the secretary of state. And I think there were some, there were some, I think, I won't speak for them, but so Travis can, well, I will speak for you, and then correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, which is, I think they, I think the initial filing was done to the wrong state agency. So they've provided, I think, satisfactory evidence that they want to be a corporation. That provides a little glitch in, like, when the contract will be signed, because if they're gonna move to a corporation, we're gonna want them to have operators, officers to sign the contract, not the incorporator. So all of that should be able to be handled, you know, before the, before New Year's.
Okay. Question for Travis. When are you guys gonna repair or fix your website? Because right now, you're saying you're a 501(c)(3), you're a 501(c)(6), and that you don't take public funds, but you're asking us to give you public funds. It's very confusing, and it's kind of misleading the public, so I'm just wondering when you're gonna...
I can fix that tomorrow.
Okay, there's also on, let's see, page one fifty-five, we're saying that the city owns parcels assessed at sixteen thousand four forty-five seventy-seven for the first year of operation, but we're only going to fund ten thousand of that and hold the rest as needed. I'm confused as to why we wouldn't be giving our whole assessment.
Where is that?
Page one fifty-five, item number five. Yes, one fifty-five of three forty. It's, it's actually gonna be...
In the seven A part, or the seven C?
It is, but I mean, it has to do with...
Okay, so it's in seven C.
It's in seven C, but it's part of our obligation to the downtown property owners, and I'm just curious as to why we're not funding the whole, the whole thing. Isaac.
Director Moreno's got an answer. What happened?
Isaac, I'm breaking in blocks.
Okay, calling a friend, yep.
So if you, so you're reviewing the fiscal impact section, basically what you see is an appropriation normally heading there. So what you'll look at is the appropriation that's currently there during the budget process. But if you look at that last statement, it says, now we'll execute an administrative budget transfer to find the remaining balance that is needed. So in other words, we'll look within our internal budget to do an administrative transfer to cover that remaining balance.
Okay, so that is, that's Turlock's internal.
That's our internal accounting process.
We have 10,000 in our budget.
Yeah, so during the budget process, we only counted for 10. So because of the, the, the initial amount, we're going to, I shouldn't say initial, but the amount, we're going to shift internally and try to find those funds instead of trying to pull it out of reserve.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense.
More questions?
Oh, yeah. County's going to do that. Okay, and on page 184 of the agenda, it should be in the P bid. 184, sorry, maybe it's 183. Uh, it's, it's, it's actually 183. There's two statements that seem to be conflicting. Does the city receive an in-kind contribution deduction for, um, us providing free parking? Because one of the statements says that we get a benefit and then the other one says that anyone that provides free parking gets a, uh, gets a deduction from their, um, assessment. Thank you.
Are you, are you asking me or are you asking Anthony?
I'm asking whomever can answer the question.
I'm, I'm not, I don't have the full agenda in front of me, so I can't read the exact verbiage, but, uh, I know that, uh, for, we provide the services for the public parking lots, meaning the, uh, the asphalt, uh, resealing, excuse me, the, uh, the maintenance of the trees and, and upkeeping of all that. So that's our, uh, what we apply to those assessments when they pay their funds.
This basically is saying that because you're providing free parking, that's a public benefit and you will get a deduction from your assessment because you're providing a benefit to the public. So I'm just wondering what our deduction would be? Or have we?
I'm not aware of that, the exact line that you're in there, so I could, I would have to.
I don't think we've calculated that.
Yeah.
Okay, but we are going to calculate it.
We will.
As part of the, of the actual P bid, um, rules and, and, and why it's, it's out there to begin with, um, the very first item in there is crime reduction, but there is no, there's nothing in, in the, in the P bid or the budget for providing, um, any kind of extra security. Why doesn't the, uh, Downtown Property Owners Association, um, have any extra security? I mean, any of the other sub, any of the other shopping centers that I deal with, they have extra security. And if that, and, and when you came before, that was one of the biggest problems downtown was people not feeling secure. So I'm wondering why it isn't in, in your budget to add extra security?
Well, originally when we came forth, we had a much bigger budget proposal. Uh, security was a, was a huge part of that, uh, budget proposal. Um, the council, uh, gave us direction or I had the proper way to say that it got, uh, kind of kicked back, um, when it was proposed, so we had to do budget cuts. So the full security part of it was one of the things that we had to cut out of there. It is something that is planned in the clean and safe program that we're, uh, trying to implement. Uh, of course, a huge part of that in clean and safe program is, uh, Helping Hands Ministry, uh, to help keep it clean and they help with the patrolling of some of the issues that we have downtown, uh, and the needles and feces and other things that may, uh, be a public danger. Uh, so we are addressing that. And then in our program, we have, um, on a per year need, uh, if we need a higher extra security during the holiday seasons or things like that, high, high, uh, potential crime reasons. So that is in plan, but it's in our clean and safe program that is listed in the, in the, in the.
Right, and that's the $80,000 extra that the city of Turlock would be providing.
Part, yeah, in the partnership of part of that, yes, it would be in that clean and safe program.
Okay, so, which leads me to my next question is, um, why wasn't that $80,000 added to your budget and then spread out over the assessments? Why is it up to the citizens of Turlock to provide this $80,000 for extra cleaning and extra security, um, when we don't do that for anybody else? I, so I'm, I'm wondering why you didn't add it into the assessments for everybody to participate in that, in that $80,000?
When we were going through the assessments, we had to prioritize what was the, uh, infrastructure, what we're aging out on, um, in, in the 10-year period that we're going to be here. Um, what is going to be the most effective and what we need to take care of? Um, of course, the, the safety part of it is a huge part, but if we don't have the infrastructure that's there to patrol, um, then it's kind of put in the, the carriage before the horse. So we had to go in order, um, and be able to fund each, everything that we funded had to be fu- fully funded, um, so that we weren't partially funding things. Of course, clean and safe or, or getting, there is still outside money. So when we're talking about assessment dollars, this is what we're guaranteeing for, to make sure it's going to be taken care of with the assessment. That does not stop us from going and fundraising or partnering or contracting with the city or other private organizations. Uh, so those, those plans are still in place. We just have to find outside sources. So, so what you've seen in the proposed P bid is just what's guaranteed with the assessments. So we do still have a plan to address those. That was our, what, basically what the P bid says is what's your bare minimum budget and what, what's guaranteed to be taken care of.
Okay, so it wasn't important to add?
It's definitely important, it's definitely important. But like I said, when you're, when, when we cut it out of the P bid, we have to have fully funded programs and what our bare minimum budget is. So that's why the P bid is your bare minimum budget. Uh, the main, maintenance and infrastructure kind of comes first on that part. And then the, the, just like you guys said, on the, you, on a year-to-year base, you have to be able to decide. So when we put things on the P bid, it cannot be adjusted. Um, there's only a percentage that you can adjust what each fund gets and it has to be done within the first year. Um, so we're obligating ourselves for the next 10 years on, on, on things. So we have to put what makes the most sense to obligate for the next 10 years in categories and then on a year-to-year basis, decide where we're going to fund, grab outside funding or, uh, partnerships or be more creative on those other programs to get them fully, fully funded.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. So you look up business improvement districts in California and it specifically talks about like business district and it says P bid and, and it basically says that the property and, and business improvement districts are there, like you're getting your assessment for everything that you're asking money for from us. So, um, it's including the pub, cleaning the, the public right of ways, sidewalk and gutter maintenance, trash removal, security services, parking or transportation related services, economic development, special lighting, I can go on. But so I'm just, again, there's, I have a little bit of level, like I want, I want to talk to y'all, but it's duplication of payment for the city to give you the assessment to go towards that and then to give more money for that. So if you find new ways to, to title the monies that we give you, that would be helpful for me because I just don't want the public to see duplication when the rest of the other businesses that we have in their corridors have, they're, they're not getting even one part of it. You're going to get dual if we were to vote for this, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm struggling with that part.
Uh, absolutely. And I just want to remind you that our meetings are public. You, I would strongly encourage you guys' participation. The last year we've been discussing, uh, where our funds have been and I've reached out several times to try to get you guys to the table to discuss what type of things we might want to do. Um, so we definitely want to encourage you guys' participations because it's only going to get better if we work together, we come together and we talk about what needs to be addressed and, and, and accomplished. Um, one of the things I want to remind, it, P bids are definitely a city-by-city basis. There, they have a lot of common goals, but each city has different, uh, obstacles and abstracts. One thing that we have with the P bid is we, when we were formed, we were governed by the, um, uh, I forget, what's the name of that group that, uh, that, the beautification group where they, they gave us guidelines and codes and we had to have these, uh, brick sidewalks and certain trees, these expensive trees. Now that stuff, that was the, that was stuff that was decided for us. We didn't have the, I mean, we had input, but it was something that was just pushed on us by the city. Now those costs are what is drowning our organization, the maintenance, the tree costs alone are, are more than, than our current assessment brings in. So it is, uh, that's what, that's one of the things that, that leads into this particular, that might make us different from other P pits. The other thing that happens is with our district compared to other districts in Turlock is that we are heavily affected by, one, community events. Uh, this is where the homecoming parade is, all the, all the events come to our downtown, which is what we want, we love, that's what makes the small, you know, a great town is having community events coming together. Um, it takes some, some, some city participation in those. Uh, the other thing that, uh, that's a little different than us and some other downtowns do feel this is that all of the public services, all the public benefits are in our district. Most of them are one or two blocks off of the main street, um, which is something that's a little different than a lot of other P pits. Um, normally, you know, the, they're, the, the public services are not right in, uh, in their districts. So that is something that we come to, um, it makes us a little bit different where we need a little more help, uh, because we do have heavy vandalism, you know, things that we, or, or issues that we're asking for help with that, that get not, I don't want to say forced upon us, but that, that are side effects of other programs that we're trying to do better in the city. So in the grand picture, and if we're all heading in the same direction, we want to take all elements of our ship. So I hope that helps justify.
It helps justify, it's just now for me to vote at this point where my, my struggle is again, is that we're talking about what you're supposed to provide in a P bid and what you're asking for additional monies from us are the same thing, right? That's where I, how can I duplicate the monies that the city gives you for the same thing? That's where I, I can't agree to it. We got to find some other way to figure this out.
Yes, uh, once, once again, I want to just put, the, the main funding that we're asking for, uh, that's listed is the help with, uh, tree pruning, which was, once again, was something that the, the, the city was pushed, pushed on to us. So I think that that, that makes sense. I think that's just a follow-up there.
But it's all the maintenance things, right?
What, what else is listed there that you wanted to go over?
Well, maintenance, safe, uh, safety, everything I read off before, it talks about, let me start over, uh, cleaning public right of ways, sidewalk and gutter maintenance, trash removal, security services, these are all the things that P bids are supposed to do with their assessment. So understanding, I just voted for the other part, right? So I'm trying to have this dialogue with you. If those are the things that you're supposed to do with your assessment monies, how do we give you additional money for maintenance?
So, so the, this is another thing that makes P bids, they're, they're, they're cookie cutter, but they're unique for each ci- city situation that they're meant to enhance. It, the main, the main goal is to enhance services. When the P bid first came into operation, the city of Turlock was already providing those services. So you got, city of Turlock was already dumping trash and providing those services. In fact, the city of Turlock was taking care of the trees, uh, that were originally here. You guys had a, a great, uh, team that came in, uh, I don't, I don't know if DJ Franson is here, but he, I know he, that was one of the teams he was on where he would go out and cut trees and, and prune. So those are services that the, historically the city of Turlock had always taken care of and though I know it looks confusing 25 years, uh, later, that it might be a little diff- confusing because it looks like, hey, why are we double dipping? But you got to remember that there's a history that leads up to this point. And so all those decisions go back and forth on, uh, some of those things were things that the city of Turlock was, was providing before we became a district and we were trying to enhance those.
Let me understand if the P bid is, is, so we decided, no, we're not going to fund it, right? Or, or the P bid goes away?
Yeah.
The city is still responsible for maintaining streets, maintaining trees, maintaining lighting, maintaining all, is that right?
Y- yes, uh, the way it is currently, uh, but a lot of cities have, uh, trees as an iffy subject because a lot of cities have passed the trees on to property owners. Um, but I believe to my knowledge, the way that it's written in Turlock is that it would still go, it would, unless there wasn't a, a, a vote on it, it would go back to, but that was my understanding.
Is it my understanding that the P bid can contract with outside services probably less expensively than the city can?
I, I, that's a, that's a very iffy subject that I would not like to dance around, but yes, uh, we are, um, we are, we are able to pro, to put out for bid and get more competitive bids.
So you're not bound by prevailing wage?
We are, we are not bound by, we are, yeah, we are not bound by prevailing wage.
We, we pass on the responsibility to them on prevailing wage.
Yeah, that's why it's a, it's a very.
We're not going to represent that.
Thank you.
Because I, because, you know, anyway, I'll stop there.
Yeah.
Um, so part of this, at this point, we are being asked to, the city's best provide 20 hours a week of maintenance, right? And additionally, $50,000 annually for more maintenance and $30,000 for the clean and safe. Um, so my question is, Director Schultz, I think, we are already providing 16 hours of maintenance? Um, and if, if this, if we couldn't come to an agreement about the P bid, would we, it is our intention that maintenance staff would still need to be working downtown? Yeah. Travis, could you explain a little bit about what the $30,000 for the clean and safe does that is maybe above and beyond what city staff is doing or is able to do?
Yes, uh, clean and safe, actually, uh, well, since it's not fully implemented right now, we have been in a trial program with Helping Hands Ministry. Uh, we feel that we do get a great benefit for, uh, it's one of our things, so when we have property and business improvement district, uh, it's one of the, the, the tools that we're able to give to the businesses, uh, to take advantage of using Helping Hands ministries for those calls that the city of Turlock doesn't necessarily provide services for. A lot of it being directly with the, the homeless or transient population, uh, the issues that they arrive with. Now, the city, the police department does a great job, especially, uh, since, uh, the chief has, has stepped into the position and, uh, focused a lot of efforts downtown. We are greatly appreciative of that. But there are areas where they're just not able to take care of, or they don't have the resources yet to take care of that, uh, Helping Hands Ministry is, is able to work on a case by case. Uh, feces cleanup is one of them that allows us, them to do, um, needles, all, a lot of biohazards, uh, things that we just don't have the resources for. They're able to do a lot more affordable costs. It's definitely a tool that we want to provide for our community. Um, the other thing that they have helped amplify is, uh, is our, um, they help clean the streets. They have a streets team that they help clean the litter and the leaves and all that. So that does cut down on our, on our costs. Um, and it gives back to, to her organization because she's trying to, um, get these people, get, get her team to be, um, proud of their community and look out for it and have self-worth. And so we feel it definitely, being that one of our number one issues is, is from the homeless and transient population, that we want, don't just want to complain about it, we want to provide solutions for it. And so it's a partnership between us that we, that we are proud to have. Hopefully I didn't extend that answer out more than it needed to be. Okay.
Other questions? So for comments, we already opened it, we closed it and then we let Travis back in, remember? No, this was this?
No, that was, that was the last one.
Okay, let's open it to public. It was a long time.
I wasn't going to talk, but I've, I've, I've just got to, I feel like, I feel like we've been in negotiations with the city for a city manager's every, for a long time. It was a long process. And I kind of feel like everything's getting thrown back on us. This was what came out of negotiations and it wasn't necessarily our idea to set it up this way. Um, I feel like that's happened a few times. Um, but it, it does make sense if you look at it, three-year contract. I mean, if we're not happy with you, we can, you know, instead of having it all in the 10-year contract. Um, part of, the, the one time 30,000, I don't know if you guys are questioning that at all, but that's for the, uh, painting the poles. And that was something that was supposed to be done by the city already. So a part of it, we, yeah, don't take into it. But this isn't what we started with, this is what we ended with, um, in this. And I just kind of feel like sometimes it, it feels like this is all our responsibility. This is, this is, this came together with all of us, with city attorney, with everybody. So we all had some input in this. I don't know if that makes any sense, but.
So unfortunately, um, it wasn't the electives that were negotiating, so, um, and the Brown Act couldn't happen, so they, they did what they thought was the best, but here we are making, you know, sausage, so, and I don't even eat meat. Anybody else?
As, as a private citizen, I'd like to come up here on this, the things.
Do you have a new name?
Yeah, another hat. Um, one thing, I, uh, and you said so yourself, it was the, the city staff that, that came forward to negotiate, which were, we are entrusting that you guys are going to look out for the best, uh, uh, for the tax dollars and where they're going, but you guys are also the ones who are, uh, putting your trust in the city staff to make sure that they're pointing it in the direction that is. But you guys are also the ones who are, uh, putting your trust in the city staff to make sure that they're pointing it in the direction that is appropriate for the city of Turlock. And, uh, along with our property owners board, private citizens groups, that, that, they, everyone, I believe, I truly believe that the honest goal was to come together to the table and get the most value for the taxpayers' dollar, uh, and for the citizen of Turlock, which is, which is probably the most important. Not just what districts or whatever, but for the citizens of Turlock to, to have a community that, um, that they deserve or that is, is, um, the values are there and the things, the traditions that we have are upheld and, and kept so that we have this great city. Um, I truly believe that this is probably the best brokerage deal. It was a lose-lose and a win-win in the same, which, which as far as compromises go. If you really look at the details of this, or if you ask, if you wanted to a- ask deeper questions about how we got to this point, um, I truly do feel like the, the citizens of Turlock are getting the most value out of this contract.
Anybody else?
I'm a taxpaying citizen and I think this is a wonderful idea, I think the city should help the downtown. Um, it is a central location in the city, it's the old city that I remember when our population was five thousand. Um, and I remember it back to that point, because I'm seventy-eight years old and I was born here. Um, there's been no objection to it, at least not to this extent in the past. I don't see why we have to have an objection this time. Um, it's not a lot of money, I mean, we just spent seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars for some mess-ups in the water system. There's all kinds of mess-ups. I mean, this is something that's good for everybody, it's good for all Turlockers, it's good for the, you know, we haven't even talked about the, uh, the markets and the things that are going on, I mean, there are several more markets in the downtown area, that's what people want. That's why people come to Turlock, our sales tax, they're drawing people in. Even if they're not spending all their money in downtown, they're drawing people into Turlock and that's what we want. So we're getting this from our Measure A funds too, because we're bringing more people to our city and this is helping us get money. It's helping us get money and that's what we need. So we're, it's just an investment in our, in our city. And we need this investment, it's not a burden, it's not like we're spending seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it's not a burden, it's an investment. And that's what, uh, the people of Turlock would like to see. And I, as a taxpayer, taxpayer, uh, do not live in downtown, but I certainly like this program and I'd like to see this continue on, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm a little short. All right, so I think this is a good idea, um, I think, yeah, like he said, it's an investment in our downtown, I think our downtown is a very special part of our city. And it, you know, has lots of events and it's just a fun place to walk around and just shop around and just explore. And I think, uh, this can only improve our community and our surrounding area.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment, come back for some dialogue here.
I, like Milk, pretty much grew up here my whole life and remember when, like, it was nine thousand people when I moved here. And downtown, I mean, has a, a long, special place in my heart. And I think the investment that has been made through the years by the city, by private industry, um, we have an absolute jewel that needs to be polished. And it isn't a lot of money in the big scheme of things. And it is a source of pride, I mean, people talk about our downtown from lots of other places, right? Um, people come here for our downtown. Um, you know, it doesn't generate the sales tax that Target does, I, I get that. But, um, every town's got a target, not every town has a downtown like Turlock. I am a hundred percent in favor of supporting this.
Well, I'll just, um, echo some of the points that were brought up already, I'm appreciative of the comments about that this was a negotiation. This was a compromise to figure out how we could work together on this. Because I, I think it's important to kind of step back and remember that this is a partnership that's been going on for twenty-five years, twenty, twenty-five years. Um, and it's a group of small businesses that are coming together, that want to improve the community, that want to foster a sense of community and, you know, really keep downtown being the community center that it is. Um, and they're asking for the city to see value in that. Um, we have a fifty-plus million-dollar budget, we spend a lot of money on a lot of things that provide a public benefit. Parks, transportation, this is another one of those, having a downtown that is the center for community events, that's the center for small businesses, that's where we all get to go to parades and see Christmas lights and things, there is, there is inherent value in that. And, you know, Mayor Bublak, I hear you on, we're making sausage here, so I, I want to see an agreement to be made and I would like to know exactly what we need to change to make the sausage variety that we can all agree with.
Vegan?
There we go.
Sounds terrible. Okay, you know, I, I grew up in Turlock too, I've been here my whole life, I've gone to the parades.
Forty, how many?
Thirty-nine?
Sixty. Um, I, I, I used to cruise Main Street when I was a kid, I love downtown. But I don't represent, my district doesn't have not one business downtown. And I have talked to business owners in my district and they would love to have the same opportunity that we would be offering to, um, this. And if we, if we did this for everybody, we'd go broke. Um, I'm okay with the assessments, that's, that's fine. I'm okay with, with the staff hours going up to twenty hours, that doesn't bother me at all. We said we would do the trees, we said we would do the light poles, I'm okay with both of those too. What I have a problem with is the eighty thousand dollars a year, times ten years, that's eight hundred thousand dollars that we're giving special to the downtown area that no other shopping center gets. You, you don't get it in disadvantaged Landor Avenue, they don't get anything. I'm sure that that district would love to have some extra security, extra street cleaning, extra sidewalk cleaning, extra tree trimming. But we, we're not offering it to Landor, we don't have it in Montevista Crossings, we don't have it in, in Countryside, we don't have it in Folkerth, um, Gear Road, the, uh, Village Fresh, none of the other areas in the city get it. And they're taxpayers too. So I'm in charge of helping, say, what we can spend the taxpayers' money on. This is a gift of public funds, if we give them eight hundred thousand dollars. It would have to be rewarded in order to, to make that even palatable. But I'm okay with everything else except the eighty thousand dollars a year for ten years.
So the eighty thousand, what, what was the, the specific verbiage? Okay.
And so fifty thousand dollars per the contracts, I'm reading on page two hundred and nineteen of our, our packet. Fifty thousand dollars to the TDPOA for additional maintenance services within the downtown district. There's a little more verbiage that doesn't really, um, specify more. And annual contribution of thirty thousand dollars to provide a quality of life slash clean and safe program.
Okay, so let's, let's try some semantics here. So, uh, in the police world, uh, Chief, you're gonna have to help me, cause I can remember a couple of the, the letters. Um, SEPTED is a, it's a creation of environmental, uh, policing tools, eh, something, something. So basically, that, that talks about security and beautifying and making sure things are, are, are set so that people don't, um, don't find them wanting to commit crimes in that area. So, um, that is one of the verbiages we might wanna consider when we talk about like security or, or beautification or, or even just, you know, business enhancement. It, I, I want, I, we don't need to know how, who you're gonna, um, hire to do X, Y, and Z. Like, I, I'd rather you not, you know, be telling us, hey, I'm gonna hire this, this, that, that, do what you need to do, right? We, we don't wanna be a party to that, we want, but I don't want us to tell the public that we're absolutely just gonna duplicate our funding source and we're just gonna hire, you know, uh, security and, and we're gonna clean more. That, because, again, it goes to the fact that I am elected for the whole area and, and, um, Vice Mayor's area is District Four, so we're not gonna do any cleaning for that, we're gonna, you know, calls for service come and they will, they'll, they'll respond to that. So if we can try and make it more understandable for the rest of the public who's not getting this, this, I think I can, I can get myself there.
Can, can I help?
Sure.
Okay, so the, the only comparison that I would like to you guys to change, maybe it's because we're comparing apples to oranges when we're comparing the downtown to Montevista Cro- Crossings. Montevista Crossings, or, or any of those, Montevista Crossings, uh, Gear Road is full of shopping centers, those are private business plans that, 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 where the business plan is to build an area with a lot of stores and a lot of parking and that they can increase, they, they get their revenue because they can charge a triple net lease, because they're guaranteed a lot of foot traffic. Downtown is more of, i- i- it's, it's revitalized grounds that was never meant to hold, to handle the amount of traffic that it has currently. They're, they're all down to, all downtowns, that's why you lose some of them, is because they just kind of get swallowed up by the city. But it's a very important part of a good town is a downtown. I would compare it more to a park. You, you, it's a common space, common public space that's utilized by all of the city of Turlock. So if you, we can start comparing it more to a park than a private, uh, business, because I'm not, I'm not talking about the, the, the property, the individual properties. I'm talking about the common space that we maintain between the buildings, that's public property that all of Turlock utilizes. So that, I feel like, is more co- comparable. You would spend, you, and I would argue that there's probably some parks here that you spend more than eighty thousand dollars a year on. So if you considered seven blocks of Main Street and you compare that size park to a park of, I just feel like that's more of it.
It's less, like, I already made my vote on the first one, right? So Seven C, I gave my commitment to, I'm, I'm trying to find something here. It's, to, to say that everybody comes down here is probably not true, to say everybody goes to every park, probably not true. So I'm not trying to say somebody's better than anybody, I'm just trying to say, let's try and refine how we're expending monies. You're gonna come back on several occasions throughout the year and ask for more money for something, which I expect. We're gonna, hey, we'd like to have another event, we would, right? Will you help us, Travis? So it's not us saying that we have some ill-gotten motive to, to do this. It's how do we make it, make sense with the way we expend monies when we're not doing it for anybody else? That's all I'm trying to say to my colleagues to help me get there.
Well, I, I guess, Mayor Bublak, I need more clarity on what that, the acronym would mean and what dollar amount would need to be reflected for that, so.
Did you look it up, Chief? It's like creative, environmental policing. One more time, sir. There you go. I had to pull that out, I s-
So, okay, crime prevention through environmental design, so that's having infrastructure that makes it more or less palatable for people to do ill in a space, correct? What, like, what, what specifically need, do we need to put in this contract is, is what I'm getting at?
Right, and that's, I'm trying to help us get a four-oh here, right? So, so if the Vice Mayor is saying, um, I don't wanna spend that money on policing and more s- s- um, cleaning the, the, the streets, right? So, okay, let's, let's use it towards, uh, business enhancement and, um, SEPTED. Where it's, you know, even to the point of coming out, cops can go out and say, okay, um, y- your, your tree is, is coming down too low, the bush is here and the people can hide behind there, whatever the case may be, those things bring it, the safety and the cleanliness, et cetera. Vice Mayor?
But it's not available to all-
No.
-of the businesses. And it is, it is available to zero of the businesses in my district. And that's where I'm having a problem, is we are, I understand that we need, we need to have the assessments. Uh, that, that is not a question in my mind, the extra monies that we're, that, that they're wanting for, i- it's like we're triple dipping. We are already paying monies into the assessment to do this and then we are paying again, um, by, by having our, our people go out there and clean the, the streets and the trash and, and then we're paying again to have someone else do it. So it's, it's like we are triple dipping for the same thing. So I just can't get, I, I can't wrap my head around that. No, I'm not confused and, and it's my turn to speak. So that's, that's my, my big thing is, is the eighty thousand, I am in agreement with everything else. And, and maybe coming down off of that eighty thousand would be okay, but I, that's eight hundred thousand dollars over the next ten years and that's more money than we would spend on any other district, so that's where my hangup is.
I, I would just like to point out, can, can I, can I ask a clarifying question to Mr. Petralakis to, regarding P-bids? Can any group of businesses elect to create their own P-bid?
Yes.
Okay, so I, 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 I- We, we can't be comparing one, the businesses in one district to downtown, because they have an opportunity to make a P-bid and have an agreement like this, just like everybody else does. And, yes, three of us here are elected by only a, you know, portion of the city, but we make decisions that benefit the entirety of the city. And I, I do not feel like this, you know, I, I don't think that the downtown is, I think the downtown is going to suffer if we don't say that we are willing to partner with these small businesses that want to make the downtown more, you know, more palatable, more attractive, cleaner, safer. So, you know, Mayor, I would, I'm interested in what this environmental design is, but we need to fund it, we need to have money behind that.
That's my point.
Yeah, so, I mean, eighty thousand dollars, does that sound good?
Sound good.
Are we talking about just changing the name to, to put a different title on, what, eighty thousand dollars?
In, in some ways, yes, in some ways, no. Because I, again, the Vice Mayor's not wrong, there's, it's, it's triple value that we're putting in. And I, I honestly, I hate to say it, but let's just do it, have we checked with our unions? We're, we're, we're outsourcing a part of our job, right? Which we should check with them, but I don't know if, um, if Jesse did or not, did not do. So we're, we're gonna pay somebody, we're gonna pay our people to do the job, then we're gonna, we're gonna outsource for them to hire somebody else to do the job as well, right? So I'm trying to make it palatable here without stepping on anybody's toes. And all I'm saying is, there's, I, I'm not against the downtown, I'm saying, let's try and find a way to do this that makes more sense. And that's where I'm, I'm throwing it out there. I, I, you know, I, I threw out the last one with the two percent, eh, help me, help me get us there. Well, then let's just take a don't vote and go two-two, I mean, I, I'm trying to work here.
Well, so what happens if we vote two-two now? I mean, that's a fail, and where does this go from here, Mr. City Manager?
If you vote two-two, then the issue's dead until it comes back at another time, if the council chooses to ask me to do that.
But you, you as a representative of the city in this contract would still have to go back and, and negotiate again, something to bring forward to us, correct?
Assuming the council asks me to do that, yes, otherwise, the issue would die.
Okay, and Mr. Petralakis, we, you said we are, you know, legally bound to the P-bid now, so we have to have some kind of agreement with them?
I think that's how the statute probably reads, but, you know, I'm not, but I think that's how it probably reads, yeah. Because it, it's, you have to, you know, I think that, I mean, I think you would have, you know, again, I mean, hopefully the council would ask the manager to go, you know, negotiate whatever, because that's, because I, I mean, as I, if I, and I, again, I wasn't, I, I wasn't involved on the business side in negotiations, but I think if we could spend a little time, I, well, I think we've isolated the issue. I think the major difference between the previous contract and this pro- contract is the eighty thousand dollars. Maybe that, cause there was labor in the, the previous agreement, you know, I mean, it was sixteen hours then, maybe that's gone up or something, so. So in a way, it's not that much, so I, you know, I would maybe encourage the council to kind of think of a, uh,
I'm trying.
Gr- uh, kind of the number they're willing to allocate towards these additional things and then just describe the things in one big pot, right? We have two categories now, um, the, um, additional maintenance services and a quality of life, clean, safe program. And then maybe if you added the environmental design to reduce crime, whatever the right acronym is for that, and just say, the city's willing to, um, um, consider these things and probably, you know, probably, I mean, it, this is only gonna be a good r- relationship, right? If the parties, you know, kind of cooperate together and, and so maybe the, maybe part of the reluctance- maybe part of the reluctance of, um, the council is to just kind of hand over, you want me to blame you directly? Okay. Yeah, okay. The, uh, the, uh, is, it's like we're handing over money and maybe it's not as well-defined as the, the, I'm gonna recommend more bureaucracy. It's really good to be a habit, you know? There may be some sort of consultation process goes on, right, about what, what that additional city investment in the P bid is gonna go towards, right? Or something. I don't know. I mean, it's just not, I mean.
I'm, quick, Mr. Wilson, how did you, how did the number eighty thousand dollars come to be?
It was a negotiated number.
Is that a number?
Thirty, thirty thousand dollars was for the safe and clean communities. Fifty thousand dollars was for general purposes of the P bid.
Would you say that both sides were somewhat disappointed with that number?
Yes.
Would you say that good negotiation, you end up with both people feeling like they had to give up something?
That's, in my experience, yes.
So I, I'm of the opinion that we're asking the wrong questions. If we're trying to find a happy medium here and we're asking about what happens if we go to just call it an evening and not discuss it anymore and it fails, that's, that's not where I'm at. I, and I don't know, Mr. Petralakis, if, um, you took a timeout while we go on to another subject for a second, just pause on this, could you come up with some verbiage? You and Reagan?
I da- I doubt it.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, I, I think that,
Why are we paying him?
If the council isn't willing to improve, you know, not ready to approve it. I mean, we have another meeting, the existing contract doesn't, doesn't, uh, expire till the end of the year. I don't think it's that. I don't, based on what I've heard, I think that, I don't think it's that big a deal.
Yeah, my, my microphone on, but I talk real loud. So I don't, you know, I, but I, I think it's maybe hard to ma- you know, like, have a really elegant sausage produced tonight on this, so.
I guess I would ask then, Mayor, what is a number that would be tolerable for you? And I mean, I'm guessing Vice Mayor is zero.
No, this is zero.
Again, for me, it's less about, it's, it's the fact that we keep saying that we're gonna pay you three times for the same thing, right? That's where I just get a, that just doesn't make sense to me. Um, and, and all along, it's about how does, how does it look to the public, right? We're happy to help. We're happy to be a part of this, but could you use the money for something else?
You can always use the money for something else. I don't see public lining up telling us that we shouldn't do this.
I've had discussions with people in my district. So I'm, I represent people in my district. I represent businesses in my district and they have a problem with this.
And I've even talked to people on Gear Road and Hobbies on, um, Montevista. The people aren't happy, like, how can you help us, right? Well, call the police if something happens, right? I, I'm not trying to put apples and onions here and I'm not making my sausage. But I, what I'm trying to say is, let's, let's find another avenue where the, we're gonna, we're gonna fix the lights, we're gonna fix the trees. Don't, I don't wanna know how, who you're hiring for, for your, your cleaning stuff. That's, that's not us. We're gonna, we've already, we're paying it out of our budget. We don't even, that's an agreement that's already happened through our budget. I, is that right, Isaac? We're already paying whatever percent right now? No, for, to clean. We, we, we have staff that are already being paid. So that commitment's already done.
No, no, you're not cleaning downtown. Is that, is that what you're asking? Cause I just want to clarify.
Are, are you asking if there's staff that's cleaning downtown?
I'm asking if we are paying staff to clean.
The, the, it, the only thing that they're doing is they, they dump the trash cans and then they take care of the parks, right? We, when we decide, we, that's what, that doesn't matter. And I just wanted, just, cause I, I get, we did all this negotiation and, and it's legitimate, it's legitimate questions that you guys are asking, because this is the exact back and forth that we had. And this is the first time you're having it. So I, I have no hard feelings, because it's, it's, it's all legitimate. But, uh, that's why I'm saying the number that we came up with is very, very fair for, for all parties. And, and, and I hope that you guys will, i- if we need to take a break and do more research, I want you guys to be educated on your decision. But the, um, but, but as me and Reagan, because Re- Reagan thought the, the same thing about what the city services were doing in downtown, and we went through a breakdown and there was a lot of lapse. So we sat down, we said, hey, we're gonna do these programs and take care of these issues. And these are the funds and how, how it's gonna happen. And this is how we'll present it to council. Would you guys, of course, do your own research and figure out where it is? But, but yeah, the clean, for, for cleaning, I know you said we're triple dipping, cleaning staff right now is just, just the trash cans and, and the parks. A- and, and the, the, the hours could eat up with the, the, the light, light pole maintenance, like the electrical and changing light pole, that kind of stuff.
You have something?
Just a suggestion.
Sure. George, can you turn yourself? No, George is off. I'm sorry, apologize.
Since, as part of the issue is, it looks like we're paying three times for something, uh, why don't we subtract the sixteen thousand dollars we're already paying in terms of our assessment out of the eighty thousand dollars, so that the net number becomes sixty-four thousand dollars.
I will move to approve that.
I don't know if you want to bring it to motion yet.
Sure.
I'll second it.
Call the roll. No, let's just clean up here, one by one.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
No.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Blue Black?
No. I would make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, suspend it or, uh, send it back to negotiations with, uh, Reagan and Travis and bring it back to the, the November meeting. We've already approved the assessment, so it's just, now it's just cleanup. I'll, that's my motion.
I'm making a comment on that motion. I have a very hard time with that, considering we've spent a lot of time on this and I'm just not interested in wasting more time to have further negotiations when it's not really clear where we're headed right now, so.
I, and piggybacking that, I mean, we're stuck on a number, it seems. I mean, we, you know, you came up with a different number. I would again ask, what's the number to make it happen?
I'd like to see, um, how the, how the eighty thousand dollars was, was formatted. I mean, we're just gonna give eighty thousand dollars on the assumption that, that there's a a logical calculation of that. I, I, I mean, I have a problem with just handing over money for something and then, you know, we don't know that it was spent on that. We don't know that more wasn't spent on it. We don't know that less wasn't spent on it. Um, I don't like triple dipping. And I don't think it is the city of Turlock's responsibility to solely fund, um, a cleanup effort and additional maintenance effort. I think that this should have been put into the assessment, whether or not that needed to be redone. That's, you know, not my duty to do. I think that eighty thousand should have been spread out over all of the property owners because everybody in that district benefits from those services. And so if we don't have, you know, why is the city of Turlock responsible for eighty thousand dollars? It, it should be the entirety of the business, or excuse me, the property owners in that area, not just the city of Turlock. That's, I, I am okay with everything else except that eighty thousand dollars.
No second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Abram?
No.
Councilmember Bixel?
No.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. So we're back to no, no, yes, yes.
So I think there's a lot of conflicting information here. Vice Mayor Franco is saying her number is not zero, but eighty thousand dollars is not the right number. And, and she wants to see where the money's gonna go. And Mayor Blue Black, I'm hearing from you that you don't wanna hear exactly what vendor they're going to use and this and that. So I would really love to find a compromise here, but I don't, I, I don't know if suggesting an itemized bill, you know, an itemized budget of this is going to make sense. Um, or what, like, give me a number. What is the number that will work?
Would you guys be interested in hearing the breakdown of how we got to that number?
Sure. Sure.
Uh, just, just for, for quick numbers, uh, when we first, when you guys sent us back and you guys said, uh, the city of council said, um, that we would wanna take on doing the services, because you guys thought that we could do it in-house. You guys already had people that did trees and all that stuff. Uh, we sat down, we said, okay, that's, that's a comprehensive bill. You guys will take care of these items. And we said, okay, Reagan, uh, this is where we're at. And the scale was very heavily on the taxpayers' side. And we said, okay, that's not, that's not, that's fair. We'll take it, but that's not fair to the taxpayer. So let's come to the table and like, make more sense of this. Uh, just for example, do you remember the, the number that, uh, you guys were quoted for, from your tree guy for just doing the trees?
Well, and Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we did all the trees, it would be about three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. Every, every four years, is that what it was? Every three, every three year, each tree would get hit on the fourth year. Uh, that was something that was approved by council. That's why we went back and got to this number. Uh, our number was significantly cheaper, as you can, can see, uh, with what we're asking towards where that fifty thousand dollars came from. There was another direction. Now, these, all these decisions were decided through direction that we were given by council based off of when we've been here. So that's, that's how we got to this point. We are here. That's why we feel it's a very fa- fair deal, deal for everyone involved. The additional thirty thousand dollars was a separate program for, uh, that was helping another nonprofit that was brought, that was asked very clearly from a council member who said, I wanna see a deal with this program in it. Don't bring it back unless it has this deal. So that's what we, that's what we did. So that's where the, it adds up to eighty thousand. If there is a program that you guys would like to cut or you guys would like to take on cleaning the, the trees and stuff in-house, th- that can be discussed again. I just, like they said, we have gone to the table several times and, and I truly do believe this is a very fair deal for the taxpayer. But I, I get why you questioned, because you have obligations and taxpayer, voters to answer to.
And again, this is the first time we're seeing it, just, you know, from Friday, so.
I just want you to feel confident that we tried with the taxpayer in mind to get the best deal for Turlock.
Well, I don't think anybody's trying to get something over on anybody. I think it's just a comfort zone for each of us and we're gonna sit here and two-two, two-two, two. And at some point, we need to just pooper, get off the pot.
Can I ask a, a question with regard to concerns about how money has been spent? I mean, obviously, there's an accounting that goes on every year. Correct?
Yes, so we report back to council every year on our annual reports.
Okay.
And last year, uh, Director Marino, what was our contribution last year to downtown property owners? Hundred and fifty comes to mind.
I think the previous services were quoted just over a hundred from just the labor component that the city was providing. Um, just another caveat to what you're discussing, within the agreement, it stipulates they're gonna have to show support in exactly what they spent that money on too as well. That is in the agreement.
Because that's what we, we require of anyone, even someone that's getting a two thousand dollar contribution, they have to bring back.
What that money is so that we can instantiate to the public how that money's being spent. We just don't give out money like that. It has to be justified.
Well, we had already said that trees, you know, were ours to do. We already agreed in previous P bids that we were, we were responsible for the trees. And even at three hundred thousand dollars with the city's money, you know, I'm still okay with that. It's three hundred thousand for the trees. So that's, that's three hundred of the eight hundred thousand. I, I, I disagree that the city of Turlock should be responsible for the thirty thousand dollars extra for the clean and safe when it's only going for cleaning and we're not the only property owner downtown. Um, we should pay a percentage of that, but not the whole thing. So I'm okay with the three hundred thousand, which would be thirty thousand dollars, excuse me, thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, you know, I, I guess, split the baby. So for forty thousand dollars a year would be something I could, I could, I could do. Sure.
I know, I don't wanna, and I'm bad at that too. So, um, i- i- it's, it is, uh, the tree maintenance request was fifty thousand dollars and that is because it is, uh, done. It was, each tree was hit. I, I, I gotta go back to look at what it was. It was every fourth year. For some reason, I was thinking there's through every third year, but let's say it's every fourth year. So that would be two and a half times in the tier, ten-year contract. So you're saying, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars would be eighty thousand times ten, but six hundred, actually, it's six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars of that would have been, uh, from the trees, city costs, because you would have done it two and a half times. So.
Well, like I say, forty thousand is what I'm willing to settle on.
For?
Instead of the eighty thousand dollars per year, forty thousand dollars.
Specifically for what?
For a combination of the, um, annual contribution and the quality of life.
Got a motion?
It's just discussion at this point.
Okay.
I, I'd like to understand how we could include what the mayor is saying about the environmental design. Would that have an additional cost to it or is that just more of a consulting kind of offer?
Well, in the near future is my hope. Uh, Director Sims and I are kind of working through with FUSE is what happened, uh, and try and, and find some way to, to get cameras for downtown out externally, so that we can make sure that we're, we're helping the businesses with the, the crime that they're saying is, you know, is their problem. They're scared for the safety. So if we were able to do the P bid corners and, and cover that, uh, that would be an additional cost elsewhere that I would really like to, to look into, because I, I, security is the most important thing in anybody's life. All right, you got a motion?
All motion that we approve the P bid with the, uh, deduction or reduction of the annual contribution and the, uh, of fifty thousand towards additional maintenance and the annual contribution of thirty thousand towards quality of life, clean and safe program to forty thousand combined.
Mr. City Manager?
I'm sure that Travis and I can make that number work, if that's the will of the council.
I mean, there's gonna be other things that come up. We already know. Like, it's not a, it's not a stagnant life. Okay, I'll, I'll second it. Call the roll. Whoa, whoa, whoa!
And so are we?
He awoke.
So is the motion to approve the agreement with those numbers, or do you want us to come back with an agreement with those numbers with some supporting information that's clear?
Well, on page two oh five, you have your, your total city cost for the P bid agreement from year one, two, three, four, five through ten. And in there, each, each year, you'll see the fifty thousand and the thirty thousand. And again, I, I had already said I was okay with everything else except those two numbers. Those two numbers together being eighty thousand, those two numbers now, I would like to reduce to forty thousand. As a combination. You can split it any way you want to. In a form approved by the city attorney.
Any other?
Well, um, I like, I, I mean, I like where we're headed. I, I, um, I feel a little bit like, I mean, we, I'm gonna guess that the downtown property owners association felt like they were negotiating in good faith with Mr. Wilson when they came up with those numbers. I imagine they're gonna feel a little bit slighted by this, but it's better than nothing.
And it still comes back to the fact that, uh, no disrespect to our, our employees, but we're elected and we have representation. So if it's the first time we're actually able to have this conversation publicly, then that's where we're at. And I would, I would think that the downtown association should be happy that we, we squoze this out to get where we're at, because it, it wasn't pretty. All right, uh, we have a motion in a second and Mr. Wilson has something to say.
I'm just gonna note that, uh, we negotiated in good faith, uh, but the will of the council is always paramount in terms of how this deal goes forward.
Before you call the roll, I'd like to just make one more comment, that I hope that if this passes, um, that when issues come up with downtown, that we remember that we sacrificed, you know, we, we cut that, their ask in half. So when a community event, a Fourth of July parade, or this, that, and the other comes, um, that we remember that, you know, we have a partnership and we need to. um, that we remember that, you know, we have a partnership and we need to be supportive.
Kind of think that's what the assessment, um, vote was, but, uh, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram? Yes. Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes four zero. Okay. Bring Ms. Moniz back, please. Wow. That was a lot. That was a lot. All right, we got a playground to build. Right, Juan? We got a playground to buy.